Welcome, everybody, to the November 20th, 2018 Board of Commissioners Meetings. Please silence your cell phones and pagers or any other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers for your convenience if you want to follow along. At this time, we'll call the meeting in order. We'll do a moment of silence, reflection, and a pledge of allegiance led by Ron Busker. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda is review and approval of the agenda.
Moved to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Before we get started, we have one phone-in commissioner. And when we have that, we have to do a roll call vote on every item. So at this time, we'll do a roll call vote for approval of the agenda.
Busker.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye. So the agenda's been approved. Next, we come to the consent agenda. I'll recognize Holly Henney's office manager. Come.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Henney is Commissioner's Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the special meeting of October 31st, 2018. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from November 8th, 2018. Number seven is to schedule public hearings at 9:15 a.m. on December 4th, 2018 for the following budget supplements. SP-18012 for the General Fund Abuse and Neglect Budget. SP-18-013 for the General Fund Elections Budget. SP-18-014 for the General Fund IT Budget. SP-18-015 for the Accumulated Building 2017-A Master Plan Refinance Budget. And finally, SP-18-016 for the County Building Expansion Fund Budget. Number eight is to continue the isolated tract from Ms. Barbara Steele to the March 5th, 2019 Commission Meeting. Number nine is to set the first Board of Commissioners Meeting in 2019 on Wednesday, January 2nd, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. Number 10 is to confirm the reappointment of Thomas Valet as the Veteran Service Officer for the term of January 1, 2019 through the first Monday in January 2022 per STCL 338-1-22. And finally, number 11 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of October 2018 as submitted by Human Resources.
Thank you, Holly. Is there any member from the public that'd like anything from the consent agenda pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there any commissioners that would like any items pulled from the consent agenda for consideration, separate consideration?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mark DeSanto.
Number 10.
We've got number 10. Deb, do you have anything you would like pulled?
No, thank you, Lloyd.
Okay.
Move for approval of the consent agenda numbers 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11 on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Busker.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye. Motion carries. I have number 10. This was Mark's.
Just a question as clarification. Do we always do this appointment? As a county, or I thought this was a state appointment?
The state law requires that we do this appointment. So he's been employed for a year.
Okay.
And so after the first year of employment, we do this every four years as long as they're an employee of any county.
Okay. So is he... He's a state employee, though, isn't he?
He's a Pennington County Veteran Service Officer. So if we employ him, the state provides us with right around $4,000 every year. And he is a Pennington County employee, not a state employee.
Okay. And what is his salary?
I do not know that off the top of my head. These are the positions that we've had for as long as our office has been in existence.
Okay.
So it's not a new... Veteran Service Officer is not a new position at Pennington County?
Okay. I always thought that it was a state office, so I'm sorry. Good. That's enough explanation for me. I appreciate it.
Every county in the state of South Dakota is required to have a Veteran Service Officer because of our geographic location and the 13,000 veterans in Pennington County. We have multiple Veteran Service Officers.
Sure. No, I completely agree with the position. It's not that at all. I just wanted to understand it better.
Sure.
Thank you. For approval of number 10 on the consent agenda.
Been moved.
Second.
And seconded by Busker for approval of item number 10 to confirm the reappointment of Thomas Valet to Veteran Service Office. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Busker.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Haddock. Haddock?
She must have her phone on silence.
Is she still there?
Oh, sorry. I can't... I was saying Chairman, my voice... I can't hear what you guys are saying. Joan, is there any way you could turn these guys up a little bit when they're talking? Or... Because I can't hear any of the discussion. All I hear is roll calls from Lloyd is the only person I can hear.
Okay, Deb. Right now, we're right in the middle of a vote on the approval to confirm the reappointment of Thomas Valet to the Veteran Service on the consent agenda.
Okay. Okay, Chair. I vote aye as a number 10, right?
Yes. Okay.
Okay, sorry.
All right. Thank you. So votes unanimous. Thanks, Barry.
Thank you.
Deb, we'll try and do a better job of talking into our mics for you.
Okay. Because I can hear you, Lloyd, but that's about it. Thank you.
Okay. That takes us to the end of the consent agenda. Regular agenda items, number 12, Formation of the Hard Rock Mining Committee. Mr. Bruce Ellison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Other Commissioners, I am here following instructions of you all to come up with a proposal for the beginning or the initiation of the process and the creation of a Hard Rock Mining Ordinance Committee to draft an ordinance. And what I have done is I have submitted, and I hope you all have copies. I didn't do it the first part of November because I wasn't quite finished, and I didn't think there was enough time to get it before the commission, so I am here today. What in my proposal I have done is an effort to try and maximize public input to the commission by holding public hearings. And I kind of broke it down into three areas that I'd like to suggest that be the subject of these hearings. Who should be on the committee to draft an ordinance? In prior discussions, I've heard a lot of commissioners expressing different thoughts as to what that would be. And this would allow for the opportunity for the community to come in and give their thoughts for your input. And then what are the interests of the people of the county and to be addressed by the ordinance? If the county is going to have an ordinance that's going to simply be more than a fee-generating type of ordinance, what should be in there? And not whether it be specifics or a general concept, what do the people want this ordinance to do? This commission has very important responsibilities with regard to groundwater protection by statute and other responsibilities to the county. And I just thought that if the more input, the better, as to at least what the people are thinking, so that the committee, once composed, would have a purpose. What is the purpose to be done? And the third item that I put in there was based upon a review of a number of other similar type of ordinances. One of the things that seemed not to be there, and in getting input from different people in the community, talking to different lawyers, the idea that for this commission to have input from the public as to whether or not there should be a basis for denying a conditional use permit, which is essentially what it would be, if it is not in the public interest as determined by the commission. Again, all of the authority remains within the commission once the... Both as to what the Hard Rock ordinance would be, who's going to be on that commission, and whether it would include this particular purpose. Now, also being familiar with how public hearings have been held and in recognition of the fact that people work or otherwise busy often during the daytimes, and to maximize input, I have proposed that there be three sets of hearings. One, a weekday afternoon between 1:00 and 5:00. One, a weekday evening between 6:30 and 9:00. And one on Saturday morning between 9:00 and noon, suggesting that it be the same week so that there could be, you know, just keeping it as fresh in your minds in terms of the input that you receive. I thought that if those three areas were covered in terms of time, that that would really allow for the most number of people from our community who are otherwise busy. I had proposed five minutes for these three subjects with the... If the commission agrees to hold three different hearings, that would allow for some real input. I don't know if people would take all that time. You know, I've been hearing, and it's happened to me, too, that sometimes people will go and they'll say, "Well, I'll give so-and-so the okay to talk for the next four or five people." That's up to you to decide. I would like to encourage that individuals express themselves. Sometimes people are... They can't do that, and they want some help. That's fine. But I just think that the more input that you get from the more distinct individuals, the better it would be. And also to allow for a situation that maybe people can't make these hearings, so in which case then they could give a written submission. Again, my idea is maximizing public participation to the greatest extent and to... I propose that any written comments be submitted by the day of the last hearing that you schedule. The other thing, and again, in an effort to promote participation, because this is a government function, I think the commission could take advantage of the public service announcement type of situation that our print media or electronic media follows, and as well as on the county website, and there may be links or whatever. I'm not as familiar, perhaps as I should be, with the website. But I propose that PSA be put together, a short one, beginning at least a week before. If we go too far out in advance, people think that's too far out in advance, and they forget what they're doing two weeks later. So I thought a week before might be a suggestion. And again, this is a proposal. I spent some time thinking about it. I know, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions as to why I have something in there. Ultimately, it's your decision, but following the commission's instructions, this is what I have put together. And also following the sense of the commission, then I propose that the hearings not be until after any new commissioners take their offices, and so you all would have the full benefit of the public.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. I normally take comment from the commission first, but I kind of supported this and pushed it when it came up. And the reason why I did is because I wanted to give you the opportunity to research it and see what needs to come forward. Personally, you know what I read, what you got? I mean, nothing's out of order. I mean, we've talked about different times and dates. As far as... As soon as we're going to get to this, my opinion is that we do it. The commission looks for like in February or March. And the reason why I say that is we have two new commissioners coming on who are going to actually have some public hearing meetings coming up in January or February. And that's going to give them some experience to see what... How they want to move forward. So I hate for us to make any decision as far as that goes forward. Plus, after going... And I've met with several groups, and I wanted to see what you brought forward, you know, the staff brought forward, what type of people they would like on there, the depth experiences, other groups that I've sat down with, one of these types of groups. I'm telling you, it... And so as far as when I started reading your proposal, when you start talking to having three public hearings to see how we want to have the board set up, I think that sets us up for a lot of failure because we can't... We have a hard time getting pleasing to everybody, and we don't want a 50-member board.
And I understand that, sir. And my intent was to... I mean, how many members would be... That's all your decision. And I just wanted to... And I know this, as I mentioned, a lot of different feelings about who should be on the board, what it should be comprised of. And I was simply trying to allow... You know, I'm a great believer in public input. And then you have to decide how that...
Yeah. I think this is great. I think when we get ready to set that point in time, we're going to have the paperwork, and that's what we instructed so we... The board at that time can go through those. And I have a thought process, too, but I'm not going to throw it out there right now because I think it's too preliminary to be able to say one way or another. But I think what you brought forward is what we requested, and so...
I tried. I tried to listen to what you all were thinking and tried to incorporate it. What should... Should I just simply wait until it's on the agenda after the first of the year for the full commission to schedule this or decide this? Or what do you propose?
Go by my suggestions, probably February or March.
Okay.
That gives our new commissioners a chance to fully engulf themselves with what's coming on.
In other words, to discuss the proposal in February or March or to set the hearings in February?
I think we, as a commission, will put it on there once we come up with some other considerations. This... I mean, you did what you said you were going to do. This is... I think this will be an option that will be also brought forward at that time, too.
That's why I called a proposal, because you'll have to make that decision.
Yes.
If there's anything further I can do to help in any way in this process, please just let me know. I'm happy to do so.
I appreciate your work on this, and we'll consider it. I don't think we need any motion on this. We just accepted your proposal, and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Did any other commissioners want to comment on this? I kind of went through it pretty fast, took up the whole thing.
Yeah.
Mr. Busker.
Since I'm not going to be here, you know, I hate to comment on what you're going to do, but if I was to vote, I would vote in favor, but I like... You know, I thought you spent some time on it and done it fairly well. So I appreciate it, Bruce.
Deb, did you have any comment?
No, I agree with you, Mr. LaCroy, or Commissioner LaCroy, on continuous till we get the new board and get everybody situated and move forward then, so...
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to item number 13. Items from the auditor.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Muller with the Auditor's Office. We have before you the annual alcoholic beverage license renewals. So the motion that we're looking for is to approve the following license renewals and release the licenses upon appropriate payment of the property taxes if they haven't already been paid. Did you want me to read that list?
I think the only thing I need is I need to abstain from Corner Pantry number 21 because I'm an employee of MG Oil. That's the only one I'd vote on that one separately.
Okay.
If that's okay with the board.
That's fine.
So we'd probably entertain a motion to approve... If you ordered to read them all off or just go all except for Corner Pantry number 21?
I've read through them, but I don't know if maybe the public needs to hear. So it'd probably be a good idea to read through them.
Do you want me to go ahead and read them?
Sure.
So we have Black Forest Inn Bed and Breakfast for a wine retail on-off sale. Central State's Fair for a retail on-off sale liquor with Sunday sales. Country Bar Inn or Country Inn Bar and Casino for liquor retail on-sale with Sunday sales. Country Store at the Forks, wine retail on-off sale. Crooked Creek Resort Wine Retail on-off sale. Danger Girls Endeavors LLC Wine Retail on-off sale. Dollar General Store number 15207 Wine Retail on-off sale. Hart Ranch Camping Resort Retail on-off sale wine. Hart Ranch Golf Course Retail Wine on-off sale. High Country Guest Ranch Wine Retail on-off sale. Horse Creek Inn Restaurant Liquor Retail on-sale with Sunday sales. Mount Rushmore National Memorial Liquor Retail on-sale with Sunday sales. Mount Rushmore KOA Wine Retail on-off sale. Powder House Restaurant Liquor Retail on-sale with Sunday sales. Powder House Restaurant Wine Retail on-off sale. Prairie Berry Winery Wine Retail on-off sale. Reptile Gardens Wine Retail on-off sale. Rimrock Happy Tavern Liquor Retail on-sale with Sunday sales. Sally O'Malley's Pub and Casino Liquor Retail on-sale with Sunday sales. Summer Creek Inn Wine Retail on-off sale. Sweetgrass Bed and Breakfast Shipwrecked Leaves Liquor Retail on-sale with Sunday sales. The Gaslight Liquor Retail on-sale with Sunday sales. And Winery Hill City Retail Wine on-off sale.
Thank you, Cindy. I'd entertain a motion for approval, all except for Corner Pantry number 21, to do separately.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Moved by Busker, seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion from public? Roll call vote, please.
Busker.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye. Next, we come to the Corner Pantry number 21. MG Oil Company for a wine retail on-off sale. Entertain a motion.
Move for approval of Corner Pantry number 21 liquor license.
It's been moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Seconded by Busker to approve Corner Pantry number 21 with note that LaCroy will be abstaining from this. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Busker.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we come to item number B, the budget.
Okay. Now's the time that we've scheduled for the hearing for the 2018 24-7 fund budget supplement. So we would request a motion to approve the supplement to the 24-7 fund budget in the amount of $98,000 for restricted fund balance.
Any discussion? And entertain a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
You move for approval?
Second.
Moved by Busker, seconded by DeSanto for approval? Any further discussion?
Yeah, one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Busker.
I'm sure that this money is... Comes from the people who are lucky enough to go to the 24-7 program.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff. Yeah, 24-7 is entirely funded by the people that participate in the program, so it's not tax-supported dollars. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion for approval. Roll call vote, please.
Busker.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Cindy. Next, we come to items from the sheriff. I'll recognize Kevin Tom.
Good morning again, Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff. And we ran this through the Compensation Committee, which is the normal process, and bring it to the commission for ultimate approval because that decision rests with you. As we moved into the new facility at the care campus, it allows us to look at the potential restructuring and, I think, some efficiencies. So in essence, what we've done is eliminate the director of the facility, which was a grade 24, and created two grade 21 positions, which in our 2019 budget would equate to actually $15,000 in savings, and I think gains us efficiencies in how we operate the facility. Basically, took the facility and kind of cut it in half. Somebody's in charge of all the detox techs and kind of the operational side of it, and we have somebody else in charge of the clinical supervisors and the admin staff. And we think it's a good fit and would request your approval as outlined in the motion in the memo.
Thanks, Kevin. Is there any discussion from the board? My only comment would be, Kevin, is I think the Compensation Board is doing a good job in going through and evaluating a lot of this stuff. And I'll probably mention that later on throughout our agenda, but at this point, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move for approval.
It's been moved by Mark DeSanto. I'll second. Seconded by LaCroy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Busker.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Haddock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, we come to items from the highway. An update on South Rochford Road. And I'll recognize Mark Shaw.
Good morning, Mark Shaw, Pennington County Highway. I come before you this morning just with a short brief update on South Rochford Road. Structure number 52162272. Structure replacement at the intersection of Rochford Road and South Rochford Road has been pretty much a high priority for Pennington County for many years here. The structure is currently posted at 22 tons for a single unit and 38 tons for a combination unit truck. These restrictions have negative effect on farm-to-market transportation in the area, mostly the logging industry and agriculture sources, mostly cattle ranchers. These restrictions also influence our snow removal efforts. As the 22-ton posting of a single unit, our motor graders with a snow wing on... Attached on it are over that restriction. So we've had... We have to reroute our snow operations to avoid that bridge and then go up and get the bridge itself with just a pickup plow. We have had recent meetings and discussions with the South Dakota DOT on the reconstruction of this bridge, and they have indicated that a 2019 reconstruction is most unlikely going to happen. This whole process started in about 2005, and so we're about... We're a long ways into this, 14 years. And we were surely hoping today this in 2019 would be the year of reconstruction. But geotechnical soils testing, along with required environmental assessments, were done on the original, a lot planned alignment for this bridge. And it has been determined that the original alignment is now unacceptable for the design at the intersection. On federal highways, South Dakota DOT design standards will not allow an intersection that comes at such a skew. Well, therefore, a realignment is needed on the road, and relocation of the bridge is in order to make a T-intersection instead of a skewed intersection. Unfortunately, realignment of the road in intersection and bridge relocation, coupled with a recent expiration of the categorical exclusion that was granted 2014 from the environmental assessment done on this project, will... will most likely be delay, well, most likely delay construction in 2020. We have also learned as yesterday afternoon and as early as just a few minutes before I arrived here, an email from South Dakota DOT Local Government confirmed that since the environmental assessment was done as part of the South Rochford Road project before they were split in 2014 and the categorical exclusion was given to the bridge, road and bridge realignment will need review of the environmental assessment on the whole project. Maybe not the whole environmental assessment, but definitely the wetlands impact will now need to be done on the whole South Rochford Road project. That was confirmed in this morning's email. So we will continue our discussions, I guess with DOT. But that, that's a huge setback for all of us on the bridge and on the, on the road project. Keep snowballing here. I guess I'll keep in touch with the DOT and with the Commission, let you know where we're at.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Mark, where can the Commission help move this forward? What, what part can we play to help get this thing done in a timely fashion? So that we don't have any more holdups? Do you need us communicating with peer? Do you need us communicating with the engineers? What do you, what do you need from us? Because this is getting ridiculous.
Mr. DeSanto, I'm not exactly sure. I've got a lot of frustration going here. Seems like we have hurdle after hurdle pops in front of us here. And then now this one. I, I hope we're understanding this right or the people in peer are looking at this right. But we, we did pull some documentation when the environmental assessment was being conducted. And, and it states in here that there was a thousand-foot study corridor. And so I don't understand how moving the bridge 30 feet or 40 feet can really affect the environmental assessment. But that's what we're being told by the people in peer. It doesn't seem right to me when there's a thousand-foot corridor was studied. But I don't, I don't know where to go to, to check on the facts whether that thousand-foot corridor would come into effect and exclude us from further environmental assessment. I guess I, I don't know where I need your help, Mr. DeSanto. But we, there, there's a lot of questions out there that need to be asked of the right people. At this time, I'm not sure who that is.
Okay. Can I step in just a minute, Mark? Since I was at that meeting. Mark, you know, we were talking about some of those realignments at that meeting yesterday. Isn't that one of the key pieces we have to have figured out the exact location? So we can check the geothermal and then we can, I understand the environmental study. But once we get that figured out, then we can step into that and do the discussion on that environmental.
At yesterday's meeting on the Rochford Road Bridge, that's what, that is what was determined at the end of the meeting. Immediately after that, our staff had a meeting on the South Rochford Road project. And so this issue came up as it partially impacting or may impact the South Rochford Road Bridge. I did receive an email this morning confirming that our options on the bridge, six, seven, and eight, or any combination of, would need geotechnical work. But that is our smallest hurdle. It sounds like that could be worked in maybe this winter or very early spring. The, the largest two hurdles are going to be the possibility that the environmental assessment has to be done or it sounds like it needs to be done. The wetlands impact study anyway on the whole Rochford Road project. And because these two projects were combined at the time, they were, that's the categorical exclusion, excuse me, was granted. And that was confirmed that we have issues on the whole project.
Okay. Mr. DeSanto, you still have the floor, I just interjected.
Well, that's okay. I'm fine with that. I, I guess what I'm looking for, Mark, is, is communication with us. If you need anything, don't hesitate to call us and say, look, I need you to get ahold of XYZ and peer and, and talk to them because I'm getting one story from this particular person. I'm getting another story from this particular person. And I'd like some intervention from the Commission to find out which story's the correct story. Because that's kind of what I heard in the phone conversation on Friday. A little bit of maybe not, one hand not knowing what the other hand's doing or whether that, whether this guy's got the accurate information and this person doesn't. We need, that's a, seems to be one of the biggest holdups is that we're, we're, we're getting different opinions from different people. And we need to narrow it down and figure out whose opinion or whose facts are correct. So that we know exactly how we need to proceed. And you're doing a great job. You asked all the right questions on Friday, in my opinion. And you, you pressed, I don't remember his name, but you seemed to press him and asked him multiple times, why is it that we're only moving this thing 60 or 30 feet? And, and we, why do we need this reassessment? It doesn't seem to, there's not going to be any effect on the environment differently than what would have been 30 feet upstream or downstream for that matter. I think, and then something that came into play also was an easement that we needed or that we were going to encroach upon them, is that correct?
Correct.
By moving, by realigning the bridge. Who do we need to talk to? What do we need to do in order to make sure that that's taken care of too?
Chairman?
Mark's, Mark's going to respond to the question, then I'll recognize you, Ms. Haddock. Go ahead, Mark.
Now, you're referring to the private property that, that was promised to the Orpman's many years ago. In 2009, I believe, there was an exchange of property that Pennington County acquired some private property for right-of-way, for reconstruction of this bridge, which had moved the bridge, the new structure slightly north, northwest of the, the current location. And then when the bridge is reconstructed, the current right-of-way where the, the bridge is now would be turned over to the private ownership. This would, this would move the road a little farther away from their property where their cabin is built. So that was the reason they, they accepted this offer. Their main interest was to get the road farther away from their property. That, that right-of-way or exchange has not been fulfilled at this time on Pennington County's part because the bridge is still in place. But that, that was the, the agreement worked out. We could go back to those people and possibly try to renegotiate some right-of-way. I don't think it will be taken very well by those landowners. But I guess obstructed, I can give that a try.
Sure. If we do that and we get an agreement from them, would that eliminate the need to redo the geo-tech and environmental studies?
I believe it would, it would relieve us of the obligation to do the wetland study because of the, we wouldn't be changing the bridge location. But we would be changing the, I believe we would be changing the original alignment of the road. So how much impact that would have, I'm not uncertain at this time.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mark. Appreciate it.
Deb, you have a question?
Thank you Lloyd. I guess it's not a question. It's, it's when I went to the state with Tom, I don't remember them saying we had to do a new environmental study for a 30-feet change. Number two is why now? Because we've been going through this and they have agreed to do this bridge with us for a while. We have, we have always said it would be separate from the road. So I guess I'm not understanding the change all of a sudden from the DOT that now we need a new study. I, when I was there, I never heard any such thing and they knew we were doing these separately. So it is very frustrating for the people out there in Rochford, I can tell you. Because they've been asking me a lot about when that road and the bridge is going to get done. And now we have another hurdle that we never heard about. And again, we've been going through this for a few years, changing this bridge that they have known about. And I can guarantee you, when I was there, they knew we were doing it separately. So very frustrating for the Commission and very frustrating for the people that live out there.
Thank you, Deb. At this point, this is just an update on Rochford Road so we can do some initial investigation following the meeting. Any further comments from the Commission? Mr. Farby? You need to speak into the mic though.
Yeah. How long has that bridge been posted?
Oh, it's had a posting on it for many years. It has changed, it's gradually been going down. I, I couldn't give you the, the exact number of years, George, on, on Mr. Farby.
I should have asked you earlier, but probably something like 20 or so.
It's, it's been a long time, yes. It's built out of logs, the, the, the abutments are stacked rock with pine log cribbing. And it's, it's been there a long time. I guess I don't have the year it was built, I think in the 40, about 1940, if I remember correctly.
Well, I certainly want to thank the Superintendent, Acting Superintendent Shock for all his work. Without his effort, we'd probably be even further back. We're, we're back in the square one now, basically. But long about the end of July, was outside one day, walked across the road with the neighbors and I saw a couple county vehicles go by and one of them was, was Mark Shock. And of course I asked him what he was, what he was up to. And worked on the Rochford Road Ridge. It gave me a really warm feeling that somebody was finally, finally working on getting that, that bridge replaced. One of these days, somebody's going to put a little cows or little logs in that creek, in that creek. And, and then, then that road then is of no value. We can go ahead and pave that road, but without the bridge, it's a road to nowhere. People don't realize how, how far around it is. You can't go around through Wyoming in wintertime. So the only way around is back through Hill City to get, to get around, to get to the lake. Anyway, I certainly want to, my hat's off to Acting Superintendent Shock. I think he's done a hell of a job and it's got to be super, super, super frustrating. I listened in to both the conversations on, on Friday and again yesterday. And over the years, I've seen a lot of bureaucracy going wrong. I can't imagine bureaucracy going wronger than what's going wrong on this project. Just absolutely, absolutely, absolutely horrible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before I go to the public, Ron, did you have a comment or anything?
No. I, I listened to the, the first telephone call and I, I agree that Mark did a wonderful job of representing the county. You know, there's so much you can do when you're dealing with the state.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Just to address one of the questions Deb had. Deb, the reason that we, we have to go through this, according to the state, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark. According to the state, the reason we have to go through this again is because we ran out of a timeline. There was a timeline that needed to be met, the timeline wasn't met. So those studies expired.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it was one of those, Deb.
I'm sure it was something like that because we've been going through this a long time. It's just very frustrating that even, the bottom line is that we didn't, I thought we were covered by the environmental impact because they've known about this number for a while. And I don't see the environmental impact, if they already did one, changing much in the last, what, whatever.
Thanks Deb. One of the things I want to reflect on before we go to the public was how much input you've had from the Commission, Mark, in this last go-around. I mean, you've had George, Mr. DeSanto on the phone and in the meetings. Also Mr. Busker and myself and Deb's been to peer him back and so forth. So this is, you know, the Commission's really taken full heart of this project and ownership. And so I think they're willing to, to help you out the best that they can and they understand. Thank you for helping them understand what's going on and being involved in those meetings helps us.
Chairman, one more thing, if I could.
Go ahead.
Bottom line is, and George and, and Mark and everybody has reiterated is there's a safety factor on this bridge as well. When we all went out there and looked at it, there's some major issues wrong with this bridge that I think should be addressed here as soon as possible. Because there is a safety factor on that bridge at this point. So maybe that would make an impact, Mark, Mr. Shock, as moving this forward and why we need to move it forward as fast as we can.
I think they're working on it. Deb, and everybody, I'm going to go to, it looks like we've, we've got a person who's been standing back there for a while wanting to speak. Mr. Daniels?
You're fine, Lloyd.
This is just informational.
I mean, I can remember going to several meetings. In fact, the one on the bridge was three years ago, I think. Is that right? Pretty close. And it was briefed by the state and the, maybe it was only two years ago. It was briefed by the state and the Superintendent that this thing was pretty well ready to go. So I'd like to know when did the law change that this thing has to go into a T versus a skewed onto the road? Because if that was before they briefed us, when that law changed, if, that was before they briefed us, they, they were briefing us misinformation right from the start. And that needs to be brought up. who's going to pay for this environmental study? I mean, what, when did, when they did the environmental study, I mean, I remember discussions about that wetland area and how they're going to drain that off. And, and the previous Superintendent had all the answers to it. Now they're saying the environmental impact study that we did or was done, now, now the wetland portion of it is no good. Now, who made that decision?
Dan, I think he reported all this, we just discussed all this of what, what had happened.
No, he didn't say who made that decision to change that environmental impact study. And I don't know if Mark knows. And, and the third thing I got is you got a, a brand-new governor coming in that's probably looking for a project or two to kick some butt. That's usually what happens on a new one. Maybe it's time to send a serious letter up there and explain the whole thing, how it's, how it's went down. Because environmental impact studies have expired because of time? Give me a break. I mean, I, yes, the environment's changing, but it didn't change that much. I mean, it's, it's crazy stuff. So.
Thanks.
So I got to say.
Thank you, Deb.
Just a little clarification on, it, it does say that the, the evaluate, the environmental assessment may not have to be completely redone. But it does say, he used the words reevaluated. They must reevaluate the wet- They must reevaluate the wetlands, um, for the road project as they were initially cleared together. Um, so at minimum, I believe they said it was a ninety day, uh, comment period from the public and then, then they would review them. I, personally, on the road project itself, we have actually reduced the footprint of the road by reducing the width. So I don't think there's been any changes there that that would cause us issues, but, uh, they say there possibly is by moving the bridge. Uh, time, time is more the factor. It's just going to take more time to, to get this project going, bottom line.
Yeah. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks for all your work.
Mr. Chair, let me reiterate, thanks so much, Mark.
Mr. Farabee.
Thanks so much for what you've been doing. I know it's frustrating, super frustrating. You're trying to run the, the highway shop plus all this and that's, my hat's off to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
I'd like to thank the commission for their involvement too, these, uh, last couple of weeks, especially, uh, trying to get this ball rolling and I will definitely keep you all updated, uh, as we move forward.
Thanks, Mark. Next, we'll be moving on to item number sixteen, items from Hoon's Resource and Compensation Committee.
Good morning, commissioners. John Morrell, uh, HR Director for Pennington County. Uh, we've got a few things here on the agenda for today. Sixteen A, uh, and again, sixteen B, both were things that were discussed at a recent compensation committee meeting. Uh, and sixteen A requires some clarification, if you will, of our employee handbook. Um, we're requesting an update to the sick leave policy, um, where we're changing out, um, two of the different pieces that would be considered, uh, close family members with regard to the emergency personal leave provision of the sick leave policy. Uh, so that is a separate provision that allows for employees to take up to eighty hours of personal leave time for what constitutes a close family member as defined in the policy. Uh, what we discovered, however, and, and I'm sure that this was an error on my part, um, that we had removed grandchild from the policy. It was initially in there. Okay. And somehow, as we transcribed things over to the new policy, we dropped grandchild from the list. We want to have that re-entered into the policy. And we also wanted to remove significant other. Uh, we found it very difficult to describe what that was, uh, and it's not a family member per se under any definition that we could find. So that's the first part of what we'd like to do with the sick leave policy. The second piece, uh, with regard to the handbook has to do with vacation benefits. Um, we wanted to clarify and, and there is verbiage in the policy that speaks to this, but doesn't actually define it, um, with any clarity. Uh, we want to make sure that people understand that if they leave prior to them achieving their ninety day window with the county employment, that they can't cash out any vacation time that may have been accrued during that first ninety day period. Uh, again, that it's, it's referred to in the policy, but not specifically mentioned. We want to bring clarity to that by adding that verbiage to the, the payout piece with the vacation benefits. Um, so based upon that, we'd, we'd like to see the policy updated to read upon termination of employment, employees who have completed at least ninety days of continuous, who have, excuse me, completed at least ninety days of continuous benefit and employment wouldn't paid for unused vacation, which they've become eligible up to the maximum, uh, accrual limits. Uh, and then the motion that we're seeking with regard to this handbook changes is at the bottom of the, of the memo, seeking motions to update the employee's sick leave policy and vacation benefits policy described and included, uh, the updates in the county handbook. So that would be sixteen A.
Thanks, John. Is there any discussion? Mr. Buskrud.
People who know me are going to be totally shocked about this, but I don't know about removing significant other from this policy. Um, you know, in the old days, I would have really been against, been in favor of it, but right now, I don't know. And what's happening in this country right now, uh, marriages are on the way down. Witches are on the way up. People don't get married anymore. I don't know how you define it. I really don't, but I don't know. Yeah. Have you, is it, are we violating any federal laws or?
We wouldn't be violating any laws by removing it. We wouldn't be violating anything by leaving it in. The difficulty we had was actually defining what it meant.
Ambiguous.
Does it mean you're in, uh, a continuous relationship with a certain person for what period of time and how serious of the relationship? Do they reside at the same address? Uh, maybe they're not even in a relationship, but they share an apartment. What, what constitutes a significant other? And we just had difficulty defining that.
Review for me, would you, what emergency personal leave, uh, they got eighty hours a year, but that's unpaid.
It's, so the emergency personal leave actually grants them the ability to take personal leave time that they've earned. Okay. But for different purposes, for emergency purposes around family members or other things that may come up, that it helps them with regard to things that might not qualify under FMLA or other leave provisions of the law. This is, i- it's at the discretion of the department head. Uh, and there is that, but they can take that time with permission within the department for what's considered a close family member as the policy defines. Again, we had included significant other in the, in the past. We were recommending that that be removed. It's still their hours. It's still paid time as long as they have those hours available to take as a paid time.
And it's still because the department had some discretion, correct?
Yes.
Well, it, eh, but if you leave significant other to the department head's discretion, now you're going to get it all, all over the board and.
Exactly. We, we had that discussion as well. And, and again, it comes down to what constitutes a significant other. We, we just were unable to de, define that. And, and it would bring clarity to remove that piece and make it truly close family members as defined in the policy. I don't disagree, though, sir. I, I don't. I, I know with today's environment, things are dynamically changing. Um, but I, I don't know that this would be the place to address that.
Thanks, John.
Mr. Farabee.
I am adamantly opposed to giving the department heads that kind of discretion. Basically, they're making policy for the county. Why do you give them that kind of discretion? That's just, to me, an, an absolute no-no.
So I, I appreciate that, Mr. Farabee. This isn't a change. That, that part of the policy has been in effect. This, this isn't adding any, any discretion. They've already had that discretion.
Changed.
Pardon me?
It should be changed.
Yvette, we could take that to the committee as well and have it reviewed.
But please do.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
George, who would that be up to then? If not, if not the department head, who makes that decision? John?
Uh, I don't have a ready answer for you, but, but obviously, it's, it's kind of like merit increases. And I remember, and I'm sure Commissioner Buskrud remembers that some departments give everybody a merit. Everybody is, well, that's, that's not the way systems have to work. So it's either a countywide policy or, or not. And, and maybe it needs to be studied, but I'm adamantly opposed to giving the department heads that kind of discretion. Too much, too much variability. You've got favoritism, so you don't just, just roam.
Mr. DeSanto, you still at the floor?
No, I'm good.
From my participation in, in the board meeting, all of the discussions that you guys just had, we had twice, three times over. Seriously. Um, a lot of different makeups, a lot of different scenarios were brought up and, and they hashed them out and this was what they come up with as the best solution at this point in time to help guide us through this. Is this set in stone? No, we could come back in a month and things could change. You know, or we could make some changes of it and things aren't working out the way they need to be. I think that's the whole, like, the whole purpose of the compensation committee meeting is to review and go over what's working, what's not, and update it. And so I can tell you they worked hard on this. And so this is, they're coming to us with their recommendation. So I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Deb, I didn't ask to see if you wanted, if you had any comment.
I'm good, Lloyd.
Okay. See, no further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Buskrud?
No.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farabee?
No.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, moving to item sixteen B, uh, similar to the sheriff, um, earlier this morning, uh, spoke about different departments, or excuse me, different positions within the departments. The compensation committee also reviewed some, uh, position updates, if you will, within two of the departments within the county. The highway department position is one that has existed. The job title for this position has been highway maintenance worker slash traffic operations technician. We're recommending that we change that title to traffic operations technician. It still remains at a grade level twelve, but it actually clarifies again the responsibilities of this position. And then it would, um, be added to the county wage scale. So in the past, even though we've had this job title, it's still been in the, the compensation, the wage scale as just a, a maintenance worker. We'd like to clarify that and again, bring it as a separate position that reports to the traffic department, uh, to Eric in the, in the highway department. So again, we're asking it to be changed, the job title to traffic operations technician at a grade level twelve and to be added to the county wage scale. Uh, in addition, within the planning and zoning department, we'd actually are requesting we update job titles for a couple of positions there as well. Um, we'd like to introduce the specific job title of environmental planner onto the county wage scale. This job was last updated in two thousand and fifteen, where we've got a person in that role, uh, but it wasn't added to the wage scale at that time and it's been called a planner, even though the primary responsibilities have been shared between environmental planning and planning. We are identifying this as being an environmental planning position, reporting to one supervisor, where in the past is reported to two. Um, so again, we'd like to have that position, a title added to the county wage scale. No change in compensation, still remains at, at a grade level twelve. Uh, also within planning and zoning department, we're asking to create a position called onsite wastewater specialist. That's actually would be added to the wage scale as well. That reflects the duties of the person that's currently doing those responsibilities. Position is a grade level fourteen, same as it's been. Um, we'd actually, very similar to, with responsibilities to the code enforcement officer. Uh, but this is more around the environmental or the wastewater systems, if you will.
Thanks, John. Any comments from commission? Any questions? I can say from being part of the committee when they came up with this, a, as he says, it's not changing any of the wages or anything. It's the work that the compensation committee, many, or committees working on is is upgrading and updating the actual jobs of what they're doing and making accurate, which means some are getting eliminated and some are getting up, updated. So it's, it's not like we're creating more positions, correct?
No, sir. Yes. We're not creating new positions. These positions exist. We're just clarifying the job titles.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Mr. Buskrud.
You know, I, I, I'm not sure that's true because your last paragraph is, within the PNC department, create a job title position of onsite wastewater specialist. So are you sure we're not creating another job?
The, we're putting the job title on the county wage scale, so that person's been in that position.
Yeah.
But it hasn't had a separate entity listing on the wage scale. So it's been listed as another position within the department. So again, we're just clarifying the responsibilities of the person in that role, as we are with the environmental planner position as well. Good. Thanks, sir. Yvette, no, thank you for asking.
With that, I would entertain a motion.
Chairman, can I say something first?
Oh, go ahead. Recognize Deb Hadcock.
Thank you, Lloyd. Um, just, uh, kudos to John and the team of people with the compensation committee because, um, the job titles and the positions should kind of match each other. And they're updating a lot of this, which we've needed in Pennington County. So I appreciate all the work that's being done. So the title matches the position and then identifying what that position does. So thank you, John, and, and your compensation committee for looking at a lot of these things that we needed to update. So I, I'm in favor of this.
Okay. I think we did have a motion
to approve.
By DeSanto to approve. Does that come from a second from Ms. Hadcock?
Yes.
Seconded by Ms. Hadcock. Any further discussion? Do we need to clarify the motion? Does everybody know that it's?
I got it.
You got it, all three? Okay. With that, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Buskrud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farabee?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, item sixteen C is the warrant of appointment for our newly appointed highway superintendent. He begins on December first. Uh, will be here for the meeting on December third to be introduced. Um, but this is the warrant of appointment for Mr. Joseph Miller. Um, this is my first time with a warrant of appointment, so I'm not really sure what I should do with this. Do I read it or what would the preference be? No?
I believe he reads it.
Yeah, you can read it.
Okay, thank you. So warrant of appointment, State of South Dakota, County of Pennington. This is to certify that at a meeting of county commission held within and for the county of Pennington, South Dakota on the twentieth day of November, AD two thousand and eighteen, Joseph Miller was appointed to the office of highway superintendent for said county of Pennington, South Dakota for a two-year term commencing on December first, two thousand and eighteen, ending on December first, two thousand and twenty, unless sooner removed by official action of the governing body. Witness my hand and official seal of Pennington County, South Dakota, this twentieth day of November. And then it asks for Lloyd Lacroix Chair, uh, signature and then, uh, attested by the county auditor.
Okay. Look for, do we have a motion to approve?
Miss Motion.
I'll read my motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Motion, motion by Hadcock, seconded by Buskrud. Mr. Farabee.
Refresh me. Why, what's the basis of this warrant of appointment for highway superintendent?
The, the warrant appointment is actually required under South Dakota codified law. Uh, I don't have the data here, George, to actually give you that detail. I, I know that it requires a warrant of appointment and there's a two-year appointment process. And then at the discretion or at the pleasure of the commission, you can remove him for cause or any reason during that two-year appointment or renew the appointment at the end of that two-year period from another two-year period. The highway superintendent is one of those two-year appointments where the warrant of appointment is requested and required under South Dakota law.
That is in state statute.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion for approval? Any further discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Buskrud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farabee?
No.
Hadcock?
Aye.
And Lacroix?
Aye. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Folks, we've come to an area of our agenda for Board of Adjustments where we're scheduled to do at ten thirty. Currently, we are twenty minutes ahead of schedule. This board at the last meeting had chose to move up items from chair, committee reports, approval of vouchers. If that is their desire, we could do that or we could take a twenty-minute break.
Mr. Chair, do you want to consider knocking out your executive session item quickly?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we, uh, go into executive session.
Second.
And just to add to that motion, to go into executive session, to consult with legal counsel on pending litigation matters pursuant to that. I think. One twenty-five two, sub part three.
I would, uh,
I think that's what you said.
amend my motion to reflect our state's attorney's suggestion.
Some motion's been made and seconded. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Buskrud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farabee?
Aye.
Hadcock? Hadcock?
Oops, bad, I missed, aye.
Lacroix?
Aye. Okay. Look for a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote?
Buskrud?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farabee?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Hadcock, sorry.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Uh, as a reminder, as we're finishing this up, even from the podium, please talk into your mic as much as possible. We have a person who's on the phone and it's hard to hear unless you talk directly into your mic. So just as a reminder, please speak into your mic. Uh, we come out of an executive session and that was just a report. So next we come to, uh, oh, we need a motion to go into Board of oh, we need a motion to go into Board of Adjustments.
Move to go into Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Hackock to go into Board of Adjustment. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Buskrud.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Hackock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye. We're in Board of Adjustment, Cassie.
Morning, Cassie Posted, Assistant Planning Director. Our one item on the Board of Adjustment is variance 1817. This is a request to reduce the minimum required lot size from 40 acres to five acres in a general agriculture district. The applicant is Pete Lean and Sons. The surveyor and the agent is Ferber Engineering, Dave Muck. As this property exists today, it is zone general agriculture district. Currently is 157.19 acres and accessed off of Hidden Valley Road, contains a single-family residence. What they are doing through the city of Rapid City, as this is in the city's three-mile plating jurisdiction, they are actually plating off Lot 1 of Claire subdivision, which is a five-acre lot and will contain the house. The rest of that 152.19 acres will be unplatted. The ingress and egress easements have been granted by Pete Lean's for access to Lot 1 of Claire subdivision. This variance was routed through the interdepartmental review process and nothing of significant concern came back. Um, I would like to point out that surrounding current zoning within a half mile of the subject property is all general agriculture district and surrounding future land use zoning within a half a mile is planned unit development sensitive. Um, so there are the four criteria for a variance request. The first is that specific circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting exist. There are no particular physical conditions that would warrant approval of this lot size variance. The second is that the variance is not grant to use, which is otherwise excluded from that particular district. This lot size variance would not grant to use, which is otherwise excluded from general agriculture districts. The third is that due to the specific circumstance or existing conditions, strict application of zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship. Um, strict application of the ordinance would require that proposed Lot 1 of Claire subdivision meet the minimum lot size requirement, which will, if this variance is not approved, require them to rezone the property. And the final is that granting of the variance is not contrary to the public interest and is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. Staff has not received any complaints specific to the variance request. However, we have received one email and a phone call about a new gate that was put up across this section line. Um, staff has done research into this gate and discovered, um, that it was done in conjunction with the Forest Service, MSHA, and several other agencies to try to close off what Pete Lean thought was a closed section line, so that people would know of the hazard of the mining activity that's going on on Forest Service property back there. Planning Department is addressing this gate with Pete Lean, so we don't feel that it has any effect on this variance request, as we are actively working with Pete Lean and Dave Muck to try to get this resolved. Um, so within one mile of the proposed five-acre lot, there are approximately 15 lots that are zone general agriculture that raise and range in size from .06 acres to 1.47 acres. So if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance 1817, staff does not recommend any conditions be included as any concerns or requirements will be addressed through the plating process.
Thank you, Cassie. Any comments from the Commission? Any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made for approval. I'll second. Some motions been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Does anybody from the audience want to speak on this? Before we go to a roll? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Buskrud.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Hackock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. I'd entertain a motion to go.
Come out of Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn Board of Adjustments. Roll call, please.
Buskrud.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Hackock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye. That brings us to the consent agenda, Cassie.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item B, Planned Unit Development Review 9301 for George Bieber, and approval is recommended. Item C, Planned Unit Development Review 0509 for Richard Sturkle, and approval is recommended. Item D, Layout Plat 1738 for Dorothy Johnson Estate. Great Western Bank is the personal representative for Dorothy Johnson Estate, and it is recommended to be continued to the December 18th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. And item E, First Reading and Public Hearing of Rezone 1710 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1709 for Dorothy Johnson Estate. Great Western Bank is the personal representative for Dorothy Johnson Estate, and that is recommended to be continued to the December 18th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you, Cassie. Was any member from the public, like anything from the consent agenda, vote? Any from the board? If not, I'd entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved.
Into approval, that is.
It's been moved and seconded by Hackock. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Buskrud.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Hackock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next we come to regular agenda items, Cassie.
Item F is our first regular agenda item. This is a preliminary plat, 1834. This is a request to create lots 1 through 8 of the Keystone Y subdivision. The applicant is Shriner Investment, or Shane Shriner, and the surveyor is Spurlet Consulting. You have seen this before you, before in terms of a layout plat. This property is currently four mining claims. What they are proposing to do is break this into eight lots. Um, there is a 40-foot-wide access easement that's proposed as access to all of the eight lots. And there is also a 55-foot radius turnaround noted on both proposed lots 4 and 6. None of these lots meet a general agriculture district, which is what they're currently zoned, so they will all need to be rezoned or obtain lot size variances. Um, this was before you in June as a layout plat. It was approved on June 18th, or June 19th, excuse me, for a layout plat. Since approval of that layout plat, the applicant has worked with the surveyor to redesign the proposed roadway system and therefore the acreages of the proposed lots have changed slightly. Um, staff did not feel that they were significant enough to warrant them starting over with the layout plat. They're fairly minor. So this new request was routed through the interdepartmental review process. A couple items of note. The county addressing coordinator and 911 both stated that that proposed access will need to be named, since it provides access to more than five lots. And the county highway department also has several concerns about their proposed roadway system through there, as there are several subdivision regulations that it is not meeting. Now, the applicant does have the ability to obtain subdivision regulations variances or request subdivision regulations variances for those that they can't meet. Um, it's my understanding that due to the topography and things like that up there, they're having a hard time creating a road that will meet all of the subdivision regulation requirements. Um, so if this preliminary plat is approved, the applicant will need to obtain several more things from the Board of Commissioners before the final plat can be filed. And they'll need to do a construction permit for the existing road that was constructed through these lots. They'll need to do a road naming, a subdivision regulations variance, if they so choose, a lot size variance, or a rezone and a comprehensive plan amendment, and then the final plat. So staff and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of preliminary plat 1834 with 14 conditions.
Thanks, Cassie. That's your motion, Deb, for approval?
With 14 conditions.
With the 14 conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Buskrud. Discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Is this, um, plating, the purpose of this plating, uh, to continue mining? Or is it going to be for building? Do you know?
Um, it's my understanding that he plans on selling these off as like residential lots.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Buskrud.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Hackock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye. Thank you, unanimous vote of approval.
All right. Next item is layout plat 1835 and subdivision regulations variance 1807. This is a request to create lots 1 and 2 of Castle Creek Estates and to waive plating requirements. The applicants are John and Barbara Wilson. Fisk Land Surveying is the surveyor and the agent. Um, as this property exists today, it's zone general agriculture. It's 163.01 acres. Access is off of South Castle Creek Road via a private road easement. And it currently contains a single-family residence, a barn, an indoor arena, and an on-site wastewater treatment system. They are proposing to put this into Lot 1 of Castle Creek Estates, which would be 80.04 acres. And Lot 2 of Castle Creek Estates, which would be 83.07 acres. Lot 2 would be the one that contains the existing structures. Both of these do exceed the minimum lot size requirement of a general agriculture district. They are also requesting to waive some subdivision regulation requirements with this. They are requesting that the plat be of a scale of 1 inch equals 300 feet. Our subdivision regulations require 1 inch equals 100 feet. Due to the size of this property, staff does not see an issue with that scaling. The second that they're requesting is any additional road improvements to South Castle Creek Road. Um, South Castle Creek Road is a forest service road, so any improvements to that would require a forest service special use permits. The third one that they're requesting is dedication of right-of-way and improvements to the undeveloped section line. Most of the section lines that surround this property are located on forest service lands where they do not recognize section lines. Um, there is a very small corner of section line right-of-way that crosses the subject property on an eastern corner. But due to that, staff sees no issue with waiving this requirement. And the final one is percolation test and soil profile hole information. Proposed Lot 2 already has an existing septic system and percolation test and soil profile hole information will be required before a building permit or a septic permit is issued on proposed Lot 1. The reason they are doing this is this property currently exists under one tax ID. However, it is three separate legal descriptions. So plating it this way basically cleans it up a little bit, puts it into two platted lots versus what it is now. I would like to do this one in two separate motions, if I could, Mr. Chair. The first one would be the recommendation for subdivision regulations variance 1807, and staff recommends approval of that for the four waivers that they're requesting.
That's my motion.
Moved by Buskrud.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Buskrud.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Hackock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
And the second motion for this one is the recommendation for layout plat 1835. Um, staff had recommend approval with 11 conditions. During the Planning Commission, we actually removed one condition. We removed condition number one, because the agent had actually been in contact with the Highway Department and satisfied that requirement. So the Planning Commission recommended approval of layout plat 1835 with 10 conditions.
And that's including all the 300 the, the plating, one, okay.
Mm-hmm. Yep. It's just removing condition number one that staff had recommended.
Okay.
Move for approval.
It's moved by DeSanto, seconded by Buskrud for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Buskrud.
Aye.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Farby.
Aye.
Hackock.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Last plat is a layout plat 1836. This is to create lots A and B of Nautilus Acres subdivision. The applicant is Brett and Linda Hilgeman. The landowners are Harry and Rosina Hilgeman. Currently, this property exists in a suburban residential district. It's 2.59 acres. Currently contains a cabin being used as cold storage, a double-wide mobile home, a shed, and an outhouse. Access to this property is off of Sanctuary Place. It is noted in the staff report that it appears a building permit for the proposed, or for the single-family residence to be used as a caretaker's residence was never applied for. This property actually does have a conditional use permit that was just approved in May to allow a caretaker's residence on the property that was approved with 12 conditions. What they're wanting to do here with this is they're wanting to break this into two lots. Lot A would be 1.021 acres. Lot B would be 1.030 acres. It also appears that they plan to vacate a portion of the existing right-of-way for Sanctuary Place and dedicate a 25-foot-wide access easement across proposed Lot A to access Lot B. It does appear that there is an existing shed and a portion of the single-family residence that encroach into the Sanctuary Place right-of-way. You can see it on the drawing to the right here. There's a shed right there and then this portion of the house that encroaches into Sanctuary Place. That is the portion of Sanctuary Place that they're requesting to vacate. So this was routed through the interdepartmental review process and the landowners will need to address concerns with the outhouse. It's my understanding that they plan on removing the outhouse. However, there is also the concern for the shed and the single-family residence that encroach into that right-of-way and also the location of the shed with regard to setbacks. And then it is also noted that it appears that there's a greenhouse to the southern side of the proposed Lot A that may or may not be over the drain field, so they'll need to address that as well. However, for the purposes of a layout plat, staff does not see any significant issues, so we recommend approval with nine conditions.
Thanks, Cassie. Any comments from the Commission?
Move for approval.
It's been moved for approval.
Whoops, sorry, Chairman?
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for a second, Deb. Is there, and there's a second for approval. Now, go ahead, Deb.
Sorry, I had my thing on mute. Let me ask for discussion. So I don't know if I'm in agreement with this. The whole area, if you look at how it's zoned, this is the only area that has suburban residential there. It's surrounded by low-density, limited ag and general ag. So, um, did Kathy say that staff is in a, in, um,
Approval. Yeah, they're in approval of the preliminaries if, and then all the other stuff would have to be worked out afterward. Am I correct, Cassie?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
So isn't this like a spot zoning? If you put, um, Kathy with the, um, suburban residential there, especially with low density, and if you look at the surrounding area, this is the only part that broke up into this?
Um, it's already zoned suburban residential. I'm not sure when that happened. I haven't researched when it was actually rezoned. But they're not requesting to change anything about the zoning. They're just requesting to make two lots out of it.
Okay, so it's already suburban residential and they're going to break it down more, is what I think.
Right.
So, um, but the whole area there, it's already broken down pretty small. And now that whole area, um, it doesn't really, it's spot zoning there. And I guess I'm, at this point, I'm not in agreement with, unless somebody has something else to convince me, I guess is a good way to put it.
Okay.
I'm not seeing why we'd break it down even more and spot zone it even further down to smaller lots than, um, certainly in that, that area, I guess is a good way to put it.
Cassie, did you have any follow-up?
Anything on that?
Um, the only thing, I, I didn't write this staff report. The only thing that, um, I can say to the effect of that The only thing that I can say to the effect of that is that they did have that conditional use permit for a caretaker's residence. They may be looking to break it up so that they don't have to have that conditional use permit. They can have two residences on separate lots. That would be my assumption.
I guess that's my, that's my concern, is to break it down that much. And Kathy, did you say that the septic in the water on that property can hold the smaller lots, and it wouldn't affect, basically, you know, the water and sewer in that area having no, that smaller density in that area?
They would still meet, both of those lots would still meet that one-acre requirement to be able to install a septic system.
Okay. And no complaints from the neighbors in the surrounding area about breaking this down? Any for them?
I don't believe we've heard anything from them.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Deb. Mr. DeSanto.
Deb, just to answer your question, basically, I think Cassie's right. I think they're just trying to do this so that they can avoid having to continue to do the conditional use permit. They're gonna have that caretaker living there anyway, so they just like to have two separate addresses, two separate lots.
They didn't, they didn't have building permits for what?
They have not applied for the building permit for their proposed caretaker's residence yet. They have not put that out there as of this time, to my understanding.
But it's already there?
No, there's only one house there right now, I believe.
Okay. So there, I thought you said that your caretaker's residence is there, they didn't get a building permit for it yet, but what you're saying is they will need one to put one once we approve this.
Yep.
Right.
Okay. Thanks. We're gonna move right along. Is there any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Aye.
Hadcock?
No.
LaCroy?
Aye. Motion passes with one no from Ms. Hadcock.
Thank you.
Next, that brings us to item I.
Good morning. Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Item I is a request to schedule a special Board of Commissioners meetings regarding Kroll Inc.'s applications for mining and construction permits. The Pennington County Planning Commission has scheduled a special meeting on January eighth, 2019, to consider Kroll Inc.'s applications for mining and construction permits. If necessary, the hearing may be continued for further public comment and vote on January ninth, 2019. The tentatively scheduled January ninth meeting will be held only in event the Planning Commission does not make a decision on the applications at the scheduled January eighth meeting. The Planning Commission may recommend approval of the mining and construction permits, continue the agenda item for further consideration, or recommend denial with or without prejudice. The Planning Director is requesting the Board of Commissioners schedule a special meeting to review and consider the Planning Commission's decisions regarding Kroll Inc.'s applications for mining construction permits. Based upon advertising schedules and the scheduled hearings before the Planning Commission, the Board of Commissioners may consider the following dates. Did you want me to read them?
Um.
Public?
Yeah, I'll go ahead.
January sixteenth, 2019, January seventeenth, 2019, January twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, or twenty-fifth of 2019.
Thank you, Brittany. And as you guys have noticed, except the only thing that's changed with the Planning Commission actually set two days this time, just in case. And so we're back into scheduling ours for January sixteenth. It's a Wednesday and Thursday. I had Holly check, and she checked with some people on the best dates for the sixteenth and seventeenth for the best response that she got. I just have to confirm with Mr. DeSanto and Ms. Deb right now with those dates.
I'm good, Lloyd, with the sixteenth and seventeenth.
Okay.
Works for me.
That works.
Are we having two days of it?
Well, the second date's only if necessary. And I'll read that motion. We're just setting it aside so that way if it happens to run over, we have it there and it's advertised.
Okay. Thank you, Lloyd.
And Gary, since you're here, it's okay with him, so we, I think we're good. So I guess I'd look for, I'm gonna read how this should probably, or do you wanna do that?
Pardon? The?
How it should be, should be read.
I guess the other question would be what time of day?
I think we determined that our last to go around nine AM.
Okay.
So we probably need a motion to, motion to schedule a special meeting to consider Kroll Inc.'s application for the mining permits on the sixteenth day of January at nine AM. And if necessary, the hearing may be continued for further public comment and decision on January seventeenth at nine AM. The January seventeenth meeting will be held only in the event of the Board of Commissioners does not make a decision on the application at the January sixteenth meeting. Does that work? That would be my motion.
Okay.
Second, motion made and seconded by Hadcock. Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Abstain.
Hadcock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Motion carries with one abstention. Item number eighteen, items from chair and members. I'm, uh... Go ahead.
All right, Commissioners. This agenda item was to reschedule the department head evaluations that by policy are supposed to be held on the third Monday of each November. We did not have a full board available yesterday. I'm actually gonna ask the board to change directions and not reschedule this. I would like to ask you to make a motion to continue this until December fourth. What we've discovered is our current policy does not work for the awarding of the performance pay steps for department heads. So I would like to work with HR to revise that policy and bring it back for board review.
Thank you, Holly.
December fourth.
The December fourth meeting.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I would make that motion.
Motion's been made. A second discussion. I think this was one of those deals that we didn't, when we come forward with the package that we probably didn't think about or didn't read between the lines, and so it actually came up because we had one commissioner gone, well, two commissioners gone, and we couldn't schedule it in. And once we took further look at it, tried to reschedule, that's how it come to light. So I think we'll get together with John, and we'll come up with a policy and figure it out and bring it back to the commission. This motion on the floor is for, to continue to the December fourth meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Farby?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Thank you. Next, I wanna mention, under items from chair is, it's that time of year again, on the fourteenth, we are... Been invited to the LNI invitationals to do the hand games again. As everybody knows, we took the championship last year over the city. So what I wanna do is I wanna try and get some commitments from commissioners who wanna be a part of the team. We can have from three to five. It's on the fourteenth of December at eleven AM, and so I would look for...
I would like to be on there, Lloyd.
Okay. So we got Deb.
Yeah, me.
Lloyd. And Mark.
Mark's talking to the Weekly, give me, just kidding, Mark.
Would anybody else like to participate from the commission? It's not something you have to do.
I think you need the winning team from last year.
We're pretty close. We got us two, and we had Joe last year. Uh, maybe we could ask... Upcoming commissioner. You're out of town? Okay. Well, we got three commitments from at least three commissioners. We'll find out from the city their number of team members, and we will work on if we have to match, finding some additional people. But this is a really good time for our community. I mean, I know me and Mark had learned a lot during that last one, and I'm looking forward to being, going up against Laura Armstrong again. She kinda gives me the evil eye, so... But I think it'll be a good experience, so we'll put it down, and we'll get ahold of Cassie at the city, let them know we have at least three right now, and find out what they are, and we'll move forward.
Cast some good luck on you right now, Lloyd.
Oh, it's like that. All right. Thanks, guys. Next, we go to committee reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report? I go left to right.
All right. I went out to the highway department and listened to, participated in that phone call, but we've already discussed that. I also went to the Public Defender Committee meeting and listened to very interesting stuff from a local attorney in town that is on that committee, and having troubles getting attorneys, Public Defender and the state's attorney. But we discussed his evaluation and got some recommendations on wages for our Public Defender, which really follows the guidelines. It's not anything special, so we think he's doing a great job. So, I don't know. That's about all I got.
Thanks, Ron. Got anything, Mark?
I too was involved in the conversation with the highway department, and hopefully we can work together to get this resolved and get this done before the end of next year. But it does look bleak to say the, to say the least. But we'll work on it, and we will continue to support Mark and his efforts.
Okay. I will say the same thing. I attended the Public Defenders with Ron and its boys and Lightning, the work that they do. There's been a few other meetings I've been involved in. I went to one up at the Mother Butler Center the other day, a community relations committee meeting. I was pleased with the turnout, but I was also disappointed. I'm not really gonna go into some of the details of that meeting, but I think we go through a lot of misunderstanding and miscommunications in our community, and meetings like that bring people together to get more informed, and I'll leave it at that. And I too, I'm impressed with our commissioner right now. I mean, I was really shocked with, you know, the highway department holding these two meetings, the participation that we had, all on this project. I mean, it's been an all-in project, and I really appreciate you guys stepping up and doing that. With that, I'll just move along to George. Do you have anything?
No.
Deb, did you have anything?
Yes, I did attend the Fairgrounds Board, and they are moving forward on getting ready for the stock show and some of their events. Good board. And then the Fire Service Board, thank you, Lloyd, into our chili, our chili feed that we had. And then, thank you, Joan and Holly, for helping do the gift bags that we gave away to all the firemen that had like rubber bands and candy and different things that kind of said things about bringing the Fire Service Board together. So, great team there. Thank you to Fire Administrator Jerome for having the event, and then Pepper, who's amazing, our new assistant there, has been really great about getting things done and calling through with emergency management and our Fire Service Board. So great addition to our Fire Service Administrator, so... And happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
All right. Thank you, Deb. Happy Thanksgiving to you and hope you enjoy your family. And thanks for the invite to the chili feed.
Mr. Chair, I have one last thing whenever we get done.
Go ahead.
At the last meeting, Deb did the fudge and thanks to our veterans for their service because it was right around Veterans Day. And I wanna take just a minute to say that George and I are not always the United Eye, but I do wanna thank him for his service. I think he retired from, I believe, from the United States Air Force, and I wanna thank him for his service. He did a marvelous job, and it takes a lot of courage to hang in there for that long, so that's all I wanted to say.
Ditto.
Thanks, Mr. Buschrude. Ditto. Do you have any response, George?
No.
Okay. Moving right along, we'll move up to approval of the vouchers. I didn't entertain a motion to approve the vouchers. Been moved? Seconded by Hadcock. Any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Buschrude?
Aye.
DeSanto?